The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Chief. We've got some business to do. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, everybody in the audience. Tonight, I'd like to do a couple of things. First is to honor a number of my officers who have award or have been awarded certain awards throughout the last couple of months. And then I'd also like to swear in two of the newest officers to the City of Way Park Police Department. Mr. Nohava and Mr. Stole, you want to come on in? We'll start off with you guys. Tonight, these officers are going to be sworn into their oath of office as police officers for the City of Way Park. Officer Stole came from another agency with a couple of years of experience. Mr. Nohava is brand new to us. Both of these officers have completed their field training programs with us and are showing to be exemplary employees and wonderful officers for this community. Gentlemen, please raise your right hand. Beat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer within and for the City of Way Park and the state. Congratulations, gentlemen. I just need some signatures from you all. And then, Mr. Mayor, I need a signature from you as well. Mr. Callis? We're going to run through these fairly quick. Officer Callis is being or is receiving a letter of recognition tonight from an incident back on September 2nd of 2023. On September 2nd, Officer Callis was working his normal patrol functions, was dispatched to a report of a threats complaint here in the City of Way Park. Information provided from the complaint at that time was passed from Stearns County Dispatch to Officer Callis about a mail knocking on a door and mentioned something about being or blowing the complainant's head off. Officer Callis took no extra time to respond to the call for service. He arrived unseen. He did not know who the suspect was exactly or where he had gone or if he was armed. Officer Callis made contact with the complainant, was able to get a translator on the phone to assist with the investigation. Six minutes after his initial contact, Officer Callis noticed another male inside the apartment. Girl wide-eyed and quickly moved for cover. Officer Callis noted the male on the deck on the second floor apartment building appeared to be hoisting something up. He ordered the male to show us his hands. The male did not comply. In that moment, Officer Callis noticed that the male had aimed a shotgun at Officer Callis and the occupants inside the apartment. Officer Callis quickly drew his department-issued firearm, pointed in the direction and began giving commands. He moved in between the occupants of the apartment and the suspect to provide them protection. At that time, the suspect jumped off the balcony. Officer Callis made sure they locked their doors, pursued the suspect on foot, and with additional officers who came to assist, apprehended the suspect and took him into custody. Officer Callis should be commended for his exercise of solid tactics, communication skills, courage under stressful and potentially lethal situation. Furthermore, Officer Callis put himself in front of that deadly threat, maintained self-control, and secured the scene. No call is routine to a police officer. Officer Callis maintained professionalism throughout the entire call and never faltered. Officer Callis not only showed compassion for the victim, but also for the suspect. Congratulations on a job well done. He's demonstrated the Way Park core values of integrity, courage, accountability, respect, and excellence. Congratulations, Mr. Callis. Sergeant Lemkew, Officer Branton Stole, Officer Hannah DeShepper, and Officer Anthony Nohava. These four officers are being recognized with the Life Saving Award. On April 22nd, 2024, at just after 7:00 PM, Officer Stole was dispatched to a medical at Park Meadows Apartments for a male with chest pain and shortness of breath. Officer DeShepper and Officer Nohava also responded to assist. As they got on scene, they began assessing the patient. Officer Nohava, Officer DeShepper, and Officer Stole began assessing the patient. Officer Lemkew also responded to the scene. Officers found Mr. Sig- or the patient, Mr. Sigler, had lost his pulse and was no longer breathing. They immediately began performing CPR, established their airway, provided rescue breath, and through assistance with male paramedics, also delivered multiple shots using an AED. Mr. Sigler regained his pulse. Officer DeShepper and Officer Nohava continued to provide care in the back of the ambulance while en route to the hospital. It was confirmed Mr. Sigler suffered a heart attack. He is alive today because of the immediate actions of this team. Officers Stole, Officer DeShepper, Officer Nohava, and Sergeant Lemkew demonstrated great teamwork. Their conduct represents the values of our city and Police Department. Their performance reflects great credit upon themselves and the Way Park Police Department. Congratulations. Once again, thank you to my officers. They come to this city every day. They do great work for our community. It is an honor to be a part of this great department with these team members. For any of the family that came, feel free to stick around and visit with your officers. Other than that, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Is there anyone here for public input? Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for public input? All right, review and approve council agenda. Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve 61724 council meeting minutes. Item B, approve additional animal license request. Item C, approve hiring process for mechanic position. And item D, approve temporary gambling application for Stearns County Pheasants Forever. I'd like to pull B. Do you want to move to approve ACD?
So move.
Second? Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Mike?
I know this keeps coming up more and more and more, and we were going to work on redoing this ordinance.
Well, I could tell you what the, I think what you need to, we'll have to have a discussion about it maybe at a work session because after speaking with our city attorney, I think it really comes down to more about just enforcing the ordinance as is or in looking at not making the exceptions to the rule. That's really what his advice was because he doesn't really feel that there's a need, and when you continue to make exceptions to that, it makes it very difficult for you to choose to not do one. So I think from his perspective, it's very difficult to know what exactly, what do you exactly change it to? Because based off of what it is, it's very consistent with a lot of other places. It's just a matter of we continue to be very lenient on the fact of letting individuals that come in for a variety of different reasons or circumstances, and we allow them to keep their dogs. But the more and more of these that we do, but can we look at it? Sure, you can change the number that you allow, but I don't know that.
We need to sit down and talk about.
Well, let's put it on a work, let's put it on a work session and we can talk.
But in the meantime, it's difficult for us because they're coming in, and so they're required and we're obligated to be bringing them forward for your consideration.
How we look at it, and maybe that's the first of the year, I don't know.
Well, the problem is, is we keep, we kept, keep allowing it, and a couple of years ago, that was brought up at one of our.
I think there's some staff that have other changes that they would like to see with that ordinance, but I'm not quite sure that everybody agrees with them. But we can certainly bring it up. It was just that there's, we just haven't had that opportunity to do so yet, and this one came up in the middle of that, so.
All right, your wish is on item B.
I'll move to approve item B.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Porta one. Regular agenda, item A, 2023 audit review and funds transfer. And I thought those cops were here for me to take me away from my slush fund.
Yeah, yeah. I thought they were here to listen to the audit report, but it's more typical crowd size we usually get. But good evening, I'm Justin McGraw, I'm a CDS, the city's auditors. And I'm here tonight to talk or deliver the 2023 audit report. You probably got a few different documents from us. The one that's on the screen and in this format here is the presentation I'm going to follow this evening. All that information is derived from your audit financial statements themselves, which is probably that thicker bound document you may have received. So if you're looking for some more detail and more information on some of the items I'm covering, that's a great place to start. Otherwise, feel free to stop me as I go along if you have any questions. Looking at page one, really pages one and page two. It's a summation of what our independent audit report is. The standards we follow, the responsibilities of both parties, as well as our overall audit opinion. So at the top of page one there, in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly, can be relied upon for gauge performance of the city as well as for future decision-making purposes. So if you don't take anything else away from my report, please remember that, that part there. And then on page three, we jump into the numbers of the city, starting with the overall statement of net position. This is the balance sheet, if you will, of the cities. It covers all all funds, all activities, all operations, all at a point in time, December 31st, 2023, and we bump it up against December 31st, 2022, so you can see where some of those changes happened. Starting at the top, there are your current assets. These would be items like your cash balances, investment balances, receivable balances, or even amounts owed to you from other governmental entities. And you did have, you had an increase in your current assets in 2023, partly due to your cash balances for utility funds, along with amounts owed to the city from other governments, the state of Minnesota being one of the larger ones. Now, your non-current assets are primarily your infrastructure, buildings, equipment, machinery, those types of things. You did have an increase in your non-current assets as well due to the capital acquisitions you made during your street projects. Again, building, re-equipment vehicles, those types of items, they outpaced the depreciation or the wear and tear of your old outstanding assets, so you saw a little bit of an increase there as well. Moving to the bottom half, your current liabilities, these would be, I think, your routine bills. So salaries payable, wages payable, occupancy for utilities, things like that. And you did see a slight increase in your current liabilities because one of the things that is included in that is what we call, we call it unearned revenue, or revenue cash the city has received but hasn't, hasn't earned yet. And that, that item that you have here in 2023 is that state public safety aid that you've received. You probably received it right at the end of December of 2023, and that's going to be applied against expenditures going forward. So as those expenditures are incurred, we'll apply that revenue and try to match your revenue and expenditures for that, that new state aid that you, that you did receive. And then your long-term liabilities, your pension liability is a piece of that. That's primarily liability through the PERA. That had a significant decrease in the overall pension liability that PERA carries, but also that's your debt balances. So bonds, finance purchases, those types of things. You know, you had no new debt in 2023. You tend to make your required scheduled debt payments. So the expectation was those balances would go down, and they did. And then at the bottom, it's overall net position of the city. It's kind of continued that trend we've seen over the past several years of increasing that overall net position balance. A lot of it is related to capital assets. You got a lot invested in capital assets of the city. But there are other ones in there, the restricted net position is really that net position that can only be spent on, or cash that can only be spent for specific purposes, your TIF districts, your debt service funds, and those local sales tax funds. So the addition of the new public safety, local sales tax, you had some collections in 2023. That's driving that increase that you're seeing in that unrestricted net position as well. And again, this is all, all activities, all operations of the city. So now, on page four, we'll look at some of your individual funds, starting with the general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city. And we look at your cash and investment balances within that fund, not only in 2023, but the prior four years. So you kind of see where that trend has been. You did see a decrease in your general fund cash balances compared to the, compared to 2022, approximately a million dollars. So a lot of that is due to that capital activity I discussed on the previous slide. You purchased a land for, near the amphitheater. So you spent that cash, but you were still waiting on the reimbursement from the state at the end of the year. So you didn't have it sitting in cash balances anymore. I believe that has subsequently come in, that reimbursement. So I would expect your cash balances to bounce back in 2024, barring any other large additional capital activity. On page five, the activity of the general fund. So you know, your revenues, your expenditures, and other financing sources uses, those are those transfer items that you were discussing. Your revenues exceeded your expenditures in 2023, resulted in overall increase in that fund balance. And we're going to look at your revenues and expenditures in a little more detail in the next few slides. But one thing I did want to touch on here was your fund balance of that general fund. One metric that we like to use as auditors is how many months' worth of expenditures do you have sitting in that general fund fund balance? And currently, you're sitting at, I think I had it at about five months. So you have about five months of expenditures sitting in your general fund fund balance. That's a pretty good ratio for the general fund to have, you know. We'll look at it on the next slide, but your biggest source of revenue is that, those property tax remittances. So those usually come about six months apart. So if you have a buffer of five to six months in your general fund fund balance, you can cover any large expenses, expenditures that may come up, or if there were to be any issues with the remittances, delays in the remittance of your property tax expenditures, the general fund can kind of continue operating as normal. And then on page six, I mentioned, look at the revenues and expenditures in more detail. Your general fund revenues, we look at these by source. So where does the general fund get the money that it's spending on, on the operations? And you see, property taxes have historically been your largest source of revenue. That's no change in 2023. You did have an increase compared to 2022, which was reflected in your levy, so there's no big surprise there. Your intergovernmental revenues, this is one that can vary pretty widely depending on what you have going on around the city with the state funding or federal funding. You know, we've had the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act that's pushed funds into the city in that intergovernmental category. Those are largely spent out. But that increase you're seeing in 2023 is that state reimbursement for that land purchase. And then your other financing sources, these are typically transfers, transfers into the fund. That did have a pretty large increase in '23 as, some of your projects, smaller project funds, debt service funds were closed with those debts either being paid off or the projects being completed, and any remaining assets left in those funds sent to the general fund. Your other revenues also had a pretty healthy increase. Your investment income went, increased quite a bit in 2023. You know, 2022 was, 2021 and 2022 was a down year for a lot of municipalities with investment income. You saw that bounce back. You also got a large reimbursement for some street work in 2023, so you saw that in that other category as well. On page seven, so we talked about the revenues of the general fund, now the expenditures of the general fund. We look at this by department. What department or activity is using those revenues being brought in by the general fund? And these can, these can vary also widely by any one-time or infrequent capital activity that may happen within these departments. You know, public safety, public works saw increases in 2023 compared to the prior years due to capital activity. A lot of, a lot of street projects going on around the city. Some new vehicles were purchased as well. And then the Culture and Rec Department, that's where your amphitheater activity is recorded. That had that large land purchase in 2023, so you're seeing an increase driving that, that change there. And that's, that's the general fund. Moving on to page eight, we look at a few of the other funds of the city, starting with your special revenue funds. And you have, you have a handful of special revenue funds, excuse me. I'm not going to touch on them all, but I'll touch on some of the ones that had a larger amount of activity during the year. Starting with your local sales tax fund, had another healthy increase in that fund balance driven by the amount of local sales tax revenue going into that special revenue fund. But it continues to transfer those funds out to support capital needs and in-depth service needs of the city as well. The Park Land Development Fund, that had a decrease in its overall fund balance. Some of that fund balance was spent down for improvements at different parks around, around the city. On page nine, the rest of the special revenue funds. Your public safety facility sale and use tax, that's the new one I touched on when we were talking about the restricted net position. New fund here in 2023 with that new local sales tax. I can see that's about six months' worth of activity sitting in that fund. So you, I would expect that to grow pretty substantially going into 2024. And of course, that, those funds are sitting there for the eventual construction of a, or I should say remodeling, construction of a public safety facility. And then your TIF districts. So the TIF districts have largely done what they're supposed to do, and that's pay for improvements within those districts. TIF district number two had a lot of capital activity for improvements made within that TIF district, street improvement-related. So you're seeing that, that decrease there as that, those TIF funds are being spent down. And then on page 10, we've got the capital project funds. And you know, you've had several of these over the past few years, and now those numbers are getting down as some of those larger projects are decreasing. The amphitheater was the big capital project fund that's been out there for quite a while. That one was closed in 2023. So with the, all the significant capital activity or construction activity being completed in or for the facility, all that was closed to the general fund, and any remaining capital activity will be shown with the general fund going forward. And the public safety facility, that is a capital project fund that's, that's set up and prepared for the eventual construction of that facility. And it's, it's, it's fund balance is a result of several old paid-off debt service funds that were sent to the capital project fund for that future, for that future construction. So you can see it's got a pretty healthy balance sitting there for when you get around to designing and constructing the project. On page 11, I'll move away from the governmental funds to the business-type activities of the city, starting with the water fund. So your water fund cash and investment balances, you can see how they've grown over the past five years. And with a larger increase in 2023, if you have a chance to look at your cash flow statement, you should, you'll see that a lot of that is driven by just cash provided by operations. You had some, some larger expenditures in the past that fell off. I think it was the North Water Tower Maintenance Agreement that ended in '22, so you didn't have that expense in 2023. So you saw an increase, a portion of that increase being driven by that change in the overall expenses of the fund. And on page 12, the activity of the water fund, you can kind of see the trend with that net income loss amount kind of closely matching what you saw for your change in cash balances. But again, you had less expenditures. The revenues were up a little bit in 2020, in 2023 compared to 2022. So overall, that water fund seems to be doing, seems to have had a very healthy year operation-wise. And then on page 13, one thing that we look at is the water fund's ability to pay its, its debt payments with cash provided by operations. So on this slide, we, we tweaked the numbers a little bit to remove depreciation expense. It's a non-cash expense that comes out of the water fund to try to get more on a cash basis to see what kind of cash is coming into that fund versus what your debt service requirements are. You can see here, it's a very healthy margin to continue making those debt payments. On page 14, looking at the sewer fund, again, cash and investment balances over the past five years. Similar story to the water fund. The main driver in your increase in cash is cash provided by operations. So it usually tells us, you know, those rates are set at a pretty, pretty decent level to cover the cost of providing that service. And then I touched on investment income being an increase or increasing for the general fund. It also did the same thing for your utility funds, so your sewer fund did benefit from that increase in, in your investment income as well. Page 15, the activity of the sewer fund. So you can see here, your revenues are pretty comparable to the prior year. Rates are a little slightly above costs. The one thing that I touched on last, and you'll see, well, the sewer fund doesn't have any debt, so we don't actually have that slide, but that depreciation expense. So even though you saw an increase in those cash balances, you actually ended up with a net loss for the fund because that depreciation, which is around $475,000 of that fund, does eat into the, the net position of the fund overall. Then on page 16, the stormwater fund. So you can see the cash investment balances there. They had been growing prior to 2023. In 2023, some capital improvements were made to the system, and that spent down some of that cash that's available for that, those fund operations going forward. Then on page 17, the activity of the stormwater fund. So you did have more stormwater activity in 2023 compared to '22, and even '22 was a little bit higher than the prior three years. Wages, more wages in the fund with the work being done on the system, as well as repairs for improvements being made to that system. So you saw the overall decrease in cash on the prior slide. You can send, you can kind of see how it matches up with the
About the dim settings?
Activity on the, on this slide. So that's all the numbers I was going to cover tonight. In addition to auditing the balances of the city, we also audit the city's compliance with a few different rulemaking bodies. One of them being the state of Minnesota. Excuse me. We look at compliance with state statutes related to contracts and bidding, depository of public's funds, conflicts of interest, those types of items. We're happy to report we came across no issues of non-compliance during our audit. And that usually tells us, auditors, one or two things, or a couple of different things. One that is, your team here knows what those laws are, and two, they're making sure they're being followed. So great job to Sean, to Carl, to everybody here for, for enforcing those standards and those statutes. The second one we look at is government auditing standards and the internal control or how financial information flows through the city. We have one item that, if you sat through my presentation last year, you probably heard me talk about it, and that's audit-prepared financial statements. So while the products you have in front of you are all derived from your financial records, we do put them into that format. So we have to disclose that to you as well. And then in addition, on page 19, to auditing the city's balances or issuing an audit report, we also issue, we call, we call it a management letter, but really, it's a letter from us as auditors to you at the governance level to let you know how the audit went, any change in accounting practices, any disagreements we had or difficulties we had. We're happy to report none. So again, we want to thank everybody for So again, we want to thank everybody for helping us get through the process to, to get here today. And it's not just your team here, but it's also your vendors, your engineers, your banks, the county, the state. Uh, they were all very helpful to give us the information we needed to complete our audit. So thank you to everybody involved. And then any recommendations we may have. And we have two items on here on page 20. And the first one's not really a recommendation, it's more of a informational item, but it's the new Earn Safe and Sick Time Law. Took effect January 1st of 2024, um, and it requires all employers now to provide paid leave. Uh, it clarified or changes, sorry, who qualifies and for how much. It expands the circumstances on using that leave. Um, there's some notice and documentation requirements that go along with it. And from talking to Sean and your team here, they're tracking those changes, we're trying to make sure everybody's aware of that new law that, that has been in effect now for seven months. And then, uh, recommendation we'd add was the personnel policy review. And I understand this is, this is going on currently, um, but one thing we had came across was, uh, there was employees with excess vacation accrual um, compared to what was in your, uh, personnel policy. Um, and, and those items were approved, but it's one thing to consider looking at that personnel policy. And if you're going to carry over those excess balances, maybe consider, consider changing the policy to allow for those balances, um, instead of making the exception, so. And then on the last page is my contact information. So if you're looking through this in your free time and you think I should ask Justin this, or I wish I would have asked him that, uh, feel free to call, email, or, um, if you're ever around Litchfield, stop by our office. So, um, with that, I'll open it up to any questions anybody might have right now.
All right, council, any questions for?
Yes. Um, my question goes back to page eight and nine, the special revenue funds. Um, yep. Now that we're showing some cash coming in for a public safety half a cent sales tax, am I going to assume on page eight is, I might say, call it our original half a cent sales tax? For the parks and streets improvements? Is that what I'm seeing there? Is, I'd assume we must get, I don't know how that works, the end, when the check comes from the state. Do we get one big check and then you got to split it in two for each fund?
Oh, how does the funding come in? No, they're different.
My question is on page eight is that's the original.
Yep, that's correct. Yep. So we don't co-manage all the funds and they do come in, uh, two separate remittances. So one for your original sales tax, one for the new sales tax.
Okay.
So the sales tax that we're collecting, um, for the public safety comes directly to us from the Department of Revenue. The regional.
As a separate check.
Yeah, because the, the regional sales tax actually goes to the city of St. Cloud. And if you remember correctly, there is a formula that is divided out and it's 50% based off your population, 50% off the sales tax you generate. And then the first $900,000 goes towards the regional project. So we get a. Part of that. And so it's St. Cloud that pays us for that. So the pub, the Department of Revenue pays us directly for the sales tax. So that.
Which we get all the half a cent.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I just thought maybe we could have a better name for it, but I guess as long as I know now.
All right, anything else?
We could certainly change the Navy Report, you just let us know.
Yeah, all right. Anything else, council? If not, I need a motion to approve, uh, the audit report and the fund transfers.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, item B, consider construction manager at risk for public safety facility. Bill?
Yeah, council, um, we had put out an RFP here a number of weeks ago, uh, received those results from seven firms. And tonight, uh, before the meeting, we held, uh, interviews with four of those firms. And tonight, it's your choice to either move forward, you can table, you can wait, or whatever you would like to do. If in fact you do want to move forward, uh, the motion that is in front of you, I would like to reverb a little bit. Uh, if that is what you choose to do, and I will do that at that time.
Okay. Council, questions, concerns?
I think it's going to be a tough choice. I think we're kind of split, but, um, whether you want to stay with experience or local, I mean, that's what it's.
No, that ain't the question, Mike. You're not, you're not phrasing it. It's a.
I am phrasing it the way it exactly was said, experience or local. Both of them are very experienced, one is more local, so.
Council, anything else? You ready to make a motion to approve one of them?
I will. See where it goes.
Yeah, Bill, how do you want it corrected?
All right, if you're looking at your motion, if, uh, instead of selecting, take out the words, e- enter into negotiation with the firm, whatever you're looking, as a CMR.
Bradbury-Stam.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to end, to enter into a, an, into an agreement?
Enter in.
Negotiation.
Negotiation.
Bradbury and Stam.
Correct.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thanks, Bill. All right, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I have a letter here from the Salvation Army. It's to, uh, the mayor and city council members. Uh, it says, as you may already know, the Salvation Army is a church, a food shelf, and emergency homeless shelter, uh, with other, a whole bunch of programs. The Salvation Army relies on its red, red kettle donations, uh, to keep this program going. They want to challenge the mayors and city consuls of the local cities to compete to raise money and, and the winning team will receive a traveling trophy at our annual dinner. We would like to see this become a yearly event, challenge that we can advertise over the radio and on our Facebook page. This will be our first annual event. Please consider representing your city in this federal, friendly bell ringing competition. So anybody opposed to that, they can let me know if anybody. I can just let her know that we are or aren't in favor of it. I've done it a couple of times for, uh, not a bad gig. Just, unless you get it 25 below and, and you're standing outside with the north wind blowing in your face, then it's not real good. If you get a good spot, it's not too bad, so. All right, that's all I've got. Sean?
Um, I have a couple of dates that I wanted to touch base and I saw Frank was asking me the next council meeting. Um, depending upon the, um, how long it takes to negotiate the contract with Bradbury-Stam will depend on whether or not we need to have a meeting on the 15th of August, because I really don't have any other items to discuss on the 15th of August. Um, but I, we are, and I had sent out asking you guys for dates in September because I was trying to figure out our budget works session schedule and, um, approving of the preliminary. So based off of that, what we are looking at doing, which what we could do is move our council meeting to this date, is looking at doing our budget work session on August 26th. It's a Monday. And we could do that at 4:30 or 5, whichever is amenable for the, for the group, if that works. It's, it is a Monday. And if we needed to, we could not forego the 15th and do any items that we would need to on the 26th, if you would prefer that. If you want to prefer to keep the 15th, if we have items on there, we can certainly do that as well. Um, and then in September, um, with the Labor Day holiday, um, and then also with needing to, um, look at setting up, um, for the preliminary budget to be approved, I'm looking at September 16th for a date, which kind of pushes us off a little bit. I did email all of this to you in the department update with all the dates, yeah, today. So you'll have all that, but the, the ones that I wanted to really talk about, I actually set out all the meetings for the end of the year.
Oh, nice.
Um, because I know that's helpful. Yeah.
Cause the last one didn't go that far.
Yeah, this is all the way to December.
Perfect.
And those are, the, the other date to pay attention to when you're looking at that is, and this is out a little ways, is November because, um, we have an election on the 5th. We don't typically, and we have a council meeting that would be normally scheduled for the 4th. That would normally get canceled because this room is set up for elections, um, because we're there right that day. Um, and then we have to canvass within a certain period of time. And so we looked at that. We were looking at the 12th of November, which is a Tuesday, because the Monday, the 11th, is Veterans Day and, uh, city offices are closed. So with that, the two dates that I really just needed to touch base with is if you, and you don't need to let me know that right now, um, is the budget work session for the 26th, if that works for you. If you know that now, great. If, if you don't, if that doesn't work for you and you need, or if you need to let me know, that's fine. And then, and then the 16th of September, based off of the availability that I had asked you previously, that was the one week that I think I had everybody here. So I, I know that's deviating a little bit, but that's also trying to accommodate, um, holidays, uh, vacations, and just budget cycle. Yeah.
That should work.
So if you're okay with that, uh, that's what we would be looking at doing.
All right. Dave? Bill?
Nothing.
John?
Just one quick note regarding this month's planning commission meeting. It's been published in the, in the St. Cloud Times and for everyone that gets a notice. But, uh, due to the primary election next Tuesday, uh, the 13th, which would be our typical planning commission day, we're bumping it this month to the, uh, Thursday, the 15th, 6:30 for anyone interested.
All right, chief? Chief? Ah, you didn't let me ask you.
No.
Anybody else? Thought we are adjourned at 7:11.